Let me announce for the public's benefit. Unfortunately, Mayor Holbrook had a death in his family. His sister-in-law passed away, so he's not going to be here tonight. So as Vice Mayor, I'll be presiding tonight. Before we open the meeting, we are very fortunate to have with us tonight, Dr. Pastor Dave Mullins from the Lakeview Christian Church, who will lead us in our invocation and pledge. Let me remind everyone, please turn your phones off, put them on vibrate. I don't see anyone wearing a hat, but if all would rise, Pastor Mullins.
Let's pray. Almighty God, you say in your word in the book of James, chapter 1, verse 5, that if any of us lacks wisdom, we only need to ask you, and that you will give it to us generously and without reproach. And so, Father God, as we enter into discussions of leading this fine city, of the decisions that need made, of policies and procedures, of laws and rules, Father God, we ask for you to come and lead us with your wisdom. Guide us by the power of your Holy Spirit. Let the decisions we make here tonight be to your glory. Lord, you have a desire for good, and you have a desire to see justice and righteousness upheld. So, Lord, lead us in ways that reflect your justice, your righteousness, again, that all that we do might reflect your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. If you'll join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Mullins. We certainly appreciate it. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Eva, can you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Holbrook, Councilmember Royce.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy and members of the council. If it's okay with you, since we have a family and some young people in the back, do you mind if we change the order and let them go? Especially, we have very young ones in the back, and sometimes they might not be as interested in us as we are. And so, with that, I'll ask Chief to come forward and handle your part, if you don't mind, sir. Is that okay with you, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The town of Lake Placid and the Lake Placid Police Department believe in recognition of our officers, their actions, and outstanding efforts in service to the community. In keeping with this standard, the town of Lake Placid, the Lake Placid Police Department, recognized Master Officer Jose Becerra for his outstanding efforts that occurred in December 2023. On December 15th, 2023, Master Officer Becerra was given an agency assist call to assist a one-month-old child not breathing in the area of 367 Macklin Circle in the town of Lake Placid, County of Highlands, and State of Florida. Master Officer Becerra found that the mother and the child at the location quickly recognized the child was in distress, unresponsive, not breathing, and no pulse. He immediately began life-saving measures following all guidelines put forth in the American Heart Association CPR. Master Officer Becerra's quick response, recognition of, and effective CPR resulted in directly saving life. A failure to act or action after delay could have led to a very tragic outcome. Therefore, Master Officer Becerra's actions qualify him for this life-saving award and bestow upon him the city and department's appreciation. Dated this 26th day of January 2024, signed, Mayor John Holbrook.
In that, I would like to extend my congratulations to you, Officer Becerra.
Thank you.
Turn it over to council.
Thank you, Chief.
Also, just so you know, present, we did have the child in question and his mother.
Well. Well, in behalf of the town council, certainly, we are happy that Officer Becerra was able to provide such a service to your family. We appreciate you all coming tonight. I don't know, Officer Becerra, do you want to say anything, or?
No, I think that should be it.
Well.
Man of action.
I know we all appreciate your service none more than this family here, so thank you all very much.
Just to point out, this is the first time we have given out a life-saving award in 14 years.
Well, thank you very much. Do you want to do something up front, Dana? Yeah, I think what Dana wants is everyone to come right up here. We'll all stand behind y'all. Let's just go down. Thank you all for coming. Okay, we'll move to item number one, the Consent Agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, we did roll call already, didn't we?
You didn't do Consent Agenda. You went to the next one. We've got to go back to Consent Agenda.
We did roll call, right?
You did roll call.
Okay, we're on Consent Agenda, right? Okay. Okay, Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda 1A through G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Eva, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes. Okay, there is no Consent Agenda 2. We've already taken care of the life-saving award. We will go to public hearings, the update to the capital improvement schedule. I think that's Ms. Riddell. Riddell. So it's all yours, Dana.
Third time's the charm, so that was, the third one worked for me. Sorry about that.
She's not on sound. I don't think she's on.
Can you hear me well? Okay. Good evening, Dana Riddell, Town Planner for the Record. The item under consideration tonight is the five-year capital improvement schedule. I'll go ahead and read the caption into the record. This is for ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance of the town of Lake Placid, Florida, modifying the five-year capital improvement schedule of the town of Lake Placid, 2030 Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. So in terms of what this ordinance will accomplish, this modifies our five-year capital improvement schedule for the fiscal years 2023/2024 through 2027 and 2028. It is located within the capital improvements element of the town's comprehensive plan, and it is not considered a comprehensive plan amendment by Florida statute. Excuse me. But this does satisfy Florida statute requirements for the need of the annual review of our capital improvement schedule. And what this does is identifies funding, timing, and priority for the projects listed, and ensures adopted level of services are achieved and maintained. By reference, we also adopt the School Board of Highlands County's District Five-Year Work Plan, which is currently delayed at this time, but when it becomes available, it will automatically be adopted by reference into our technical standards element. I'm available to answer any questions. The changes are included in the package, and you might have also found updated ordinances. I had a couple copy-paste issues in there, in the packets that were distributed, so I wanted to make sure that I had those updated. It was just the headings. Like, I had the cemetery fund in there three times somehow, so I just changed that to reflect RPAC and, like, the FDEP grant. And those were the only changes to the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight. But as I said, I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Hayes?
No questions.
Mr. Wilson?
None.
Chair will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we pass on second reading, ordinance number 2024-01, the five-year capital improvement schedule for the town of Lake Placid.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? Seeing none. Eva, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Again, if it's okay with my fellow council members and staff, you know, I was kind of remiss. I want to make sure we send our thoughts and prayers out to Mayor Holbrook and his family, what they've gone through, and particularly Mrs. Holbrook. So I just want to say that publicly. We have received two requests for citizens not on the agenda, so again, if it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and take those two, and that way, if those folks don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, then they don't have to. Is that okay with you, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Wilson? Okay. Let me first, the first one I got was from Andy Sagelski. Andy, if you don't mind coming up to the podium, sir. Mr. Sagelski says he wants to speak to us about crosswalks on Main Street and Dahl Hall. And Mr. Sagelski, if you wouldn't mind giving us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Andy Sagelski. We're from Wisconsin. You want our home address in Wisconsin, or?
Here in Lake Placid. Says, I think you live in Placid.
We're renting a home at 145 Loquat Road Northeast.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for coming.
And so, we're spending the winter here. We're leaving the 1st of May, and we do some walking around town. We noticed on a real busy Saturday a week ago, with the farmer markets going, Main Street is a very busy road, and there's no crosswalks on Main Street. And there are no crosswalks as well on Dahl Hall. And on the east end, that's actually a four-lane road. So for us old geezers to make a run for it, I would like to just see some crosswalks, just for the safety of all of us. And I put a little test when I stood on Main Street here a week ago on Saturday, was five cars went through, and I was standing on the edge of the street. Not one of them stopped. So when the sixth car come, I was watching him. He was about 30 yards out. I stepped up, but I was ready to pack up real fast, should he not stop. Car just basically slowed down. By the time I got across the street, within a couple of feet of his lane, he went on through. So I think I'd feel a little more comfortable if I was in white lines. At least, that would be recognized by the public driver as well. So just thinking it'd be a good idea for the city to look into that.
Well, thank you, sir. I had a very brief conversation with Andy about it, but I'm going to ask Mr. McCarthy to update both Andy and the public where we are on that issue.
Yeah, just for everybody's thing, there's been a conversation last year and a half or so on our level, on the city level. Those are both county roads, Dahl Hall and Main Street, but we have approached the county. We've identified funding as part of the budget process. We are actually going to fund the crosswalks on Main Street and Dahl Hall, and the county is currently under design for that. So they're being designed. There'll be a crosswalk a little back from the intersection, but it'll be one of the lighted flashing light crosswalks, push-button intersection that flashes lights up. And so those be underway. We expect that to be next several months, that those will be installed. So those are in process. And then along the further length of Main, we're looking at doing a, it's called a SCOP grant, an MSCOP grant, in the next year or so to kind of address the rest of that section for some wider sidewalks and better pedestrian traffic.
Okay, so when we're back in '25, it'll all be taken care of, huh?
Hopefully, it'll be taken care of, yes.
Let me say that nothing happens as quickly as any of us would hope, but it is moving forward at a pretty good pace for cooperation between the town and the county.
Totally understand. I'm chairman for our township back home in Wisconsin, and things don't happen overnight. Okay, good. One more comment to make. For what it's worth, when you walk across the intersection of Inner Lake and Main, on the north side of that intersection, the second part of that walk isn't working. You get the white walk sign, and then it turns to, was it orange? And then usually it counts down, like, 25 seconds, 24, 23. That is working over there. So just an FYI. On the other side, south side, it does work.
I will let County Engineering Department, the Road Department, know tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, our second one is Ms. Maria Haag, and I think she wants to talk about the Lake Placid Historical Society and their efforts to raise some money for a new roof, I believe.
Good evening.
If you might, Ms. Hayes, give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Maria Haag. My address is 1552 Oak Avenue here in Lake Placid in Sylvan Shores. I'm currently the president of the Lake Placid Historical Society. I've been involved for the last three years, and we have been building the organization back up from where it had fallen to a pretty poor state of management. And we've made some pretty amazing improvements, I believe, over the last three years, including the interior of the building, tearing up old carpeting, getting rid of that, and bringing the building interiorly back to its original state, as well as maintaining the outside of the building, doing some painting, washing on a regular basis, washing the windows on a regular basis, doing some maintenance on the lawn as far as doing some cutting and maintenance of overgrown foliage and trees on the property. And we've also created an improvement project, and it has been completed, of reinstalling the lights that have been dysfunctional for many years on the property. They're the same lights that are throughout the town. And so now, all of those, even just for ambiance, they are all working. So we are very happy to thank some of our friends at Central Contractors for helping us out with that project. We have also, inside the building, created a wonderful gift shop, so that has created an income for us, so that has been very fruitful for us as well. As you may or may not know, the roof on that building, as far as we can tell on our records, the last time it was replaced was in 1992. And it is asphalt shingles, and they are very crispy. It's not safe to walk on the building as far as the roof goes for any kind of repairs. We have done multiple repairs over the years, and the building at this point does not have any leaks in it, but our concern is that we maintain the integrity of the building for the future of Lake Placid. So we are currently promoting a fundraising campaign looking for about $60,000. We were successful at a meeting that we had, as well as a couple articles in the newspaper, to receive some funds. And so that is going very nicely. But we just wanted to have an awareness for you folks to know that if you haven't been able to read the articles in the paper or been down to the Historical Society, to know that that's what we're doing.
Well, thank you very much. I read the article recently. I'm sure Mr. Garrett will want to write more about it in the coming future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for coming. Okay, we'll get back on track now. Nothing from mayors or members of council, so we'll go to planning. We're back to you, Dana, on 5B1.
Thank you, Town Council. I'm bringing this to you tonight simply for a discussion, and this is similar to something we had mentioned earlier today, something that the county's doing. Before they move forward with actually performing any text amendments or changes or investing staff time, they approach the commission and make sure that this is something that the commission would like council to spend time on. As council knows, you know, I've been, it's finally my one-year anniversary, so I've been, you know, steadily kind of pointing out the things that we need to change, and with the ultimate goal of getting a nice, good text amendment done for consistency and compatibility with the rest of our standards. So this is a contribution toward that conversation that I hope to very soon really be bringing forward something meaningful to you all. And so, I digress. The topic of conversation tonight is parking in towns, town right-ofways. And this comes up for a multitude of reasons. And I'm going to go ahead and pull up our interactive GIS map just for some visuals during this conversation. But we are seeking, or I'm seeking direction regarding preferences for parking in the town right-ofway. Historically, the town has maintained parking along Main, Ave., and Inner Lake, although these are county-maintained roads. And so I want to ask if the council's interested in allowing parking in the right-ofway for new developments in these areas? If so, if we allow new parking in these areas, should we require a kind of maintenance agreement? Now, historically, I'll say the most recent development that I'm aware of, where town council did approve parking in the right-ofway, would be right here at this site on Bellevue. This was, or still is slated for Bellevue Cottage's development by Ken LeBlanc. Council agreed to allow parking in the right-ofway. Obviously, that parking would be for the people who live there, but it wouldn't be reserved for them. It would be open for any member of the public who needed to utilize the parking in the town right-ofway. But as I was going through old PDs, and I got numerous questions about various other developments in the town, I realized that we never really established maintenance requirements for some of these parking areas in the right-ofway. And I think traditionally, we have taken on the responsibility of maintaining some of these. And in other areas, we say, okay, no, I know for sure you built that, so you maintain it. But some of them are so old that we take the approach of maintaining them. So going forward, because we have new developments, and I'm sorry, I'm looking for a particular church here. Going forward, we have new developments that might want to put parking in the right-ofway. So like, here's an example of old parking in the right-ofway, not on Inner Lake or Main. So there's a distinction. We know we have Inner Lake and Main. It's very traditional that we allow parking in the right-ofway in those areas. Then we have some other areas here. I think this might be a town parking lot. Okay, nope, that's a church parking lot. But I have been approached by multiple churches who have parking in the right-ofway. This, here's another church here with parking in the right-ofway. They have an old PD that says they're allowed some parking in the right-ofway. But again, no maintenance requirements are really established. So I know we don't really have to make decisions tonight, but I would like to have a little direction as to if applicants come in and they say, all right, I'm willing to do a PD. Because if we do a PD, we can establish standards for parking in the right-ofway and things like that. If they say they're willing to do a PD, do we want to establish maintenance standards? Is the town okay with having the town maintain these areas? And I had a couple other questions. Let's see. Okay, yeah, and overall, would the council like to consider text amendments to allow on-street parking for new development in the downtown area? So say we established, we have something in our code in the traffic section that says, basically, all up and down Main and all through Inner Lake, for the most part, we can't, we allow parking, standing, and stopping. But when there's a new development, if there's parking, standing, or stopping in the right-ofway, they need to actually create the spaces. It can't be unpaved or just in the shoulder. So that might be something we would consider, but we could reduce it to like, a historical area, say maybe from Washingtonia up and through Inner Lake, and maybe either reduce parking requirements in these areas or allow on-street parking or for new spaces to be credited toward the development. There's a lot of different ways we can go about it, but I really just wanted to make sure council was okay with me spending time on this and see if they had any direction in any way that they wanted to go with this type of development.
If I might, real quick, a question for Dana and Mr. Harris. Can we, if we so chose, if we're allowing a developer to build at their expense parking, public parking adjacent to their parcel, and they are getting a credit towards their parking requirement, can we require them to maintain public parking?
As part of your planned development, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Is anyone, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hayes, do you have any questions of Dana at this stage?
Go ahead.
Better practice will be, if you're going to do that, for example, with Ken LeBlanc, where it's going to be sold to single-family homes, I would suggest requiring also a homeowners association with that duty, lean on the lots. Otherwise, it's going to be very difficult to enforce.
Do you have a question, Mr. Wilson, at this stage? Ms. Hayes?
Do we have any developments that are awaiting a decision of ours on this?
No, not particularly awaiting a decision at this time, but there is a development coming through that has proposed it. They aren't, they haven't made an official submission yet, but it would be right here on Main Street, additional parking in the right-ofway here, and maybe some parking down West Washingtonia Ave. here.
In my recollection, Dana and Burt is, when we gave approval to Mr. LeBlanc for his development, it said that he had to build it. We did not, at that time, require maintenance of that, did we?
I don't recall.
Okay.
I did not see it. It was not included as part of the PD when I reviewed it.
Well, I think, I had a very brief conversation with Dana earlier today about this topic, and I think what she wants is before she and Burt spend time, meaning town resources, on this, they just wanted to get an idea of where we thought they ought to go. Otherwise, we'll ask them to work on it and bring back some potential code. Is that accurate? Is that what we'd ask you to do?
If you like. Sounds good.
Are you comfortable just giving them latitude to bring several options back?
I am.
Are we okay, Burt and Dana, just having consensus that, ask you all to move forward on code formation? Okay.
Thank you.
And I would also, at least from my standpoint, and Dana and I had a little bit of conversation, also make sure that while we're looking at it, that we strengthen or make sure we're putting out there that there will be no parking on the unimproved right-ofway of stuff. And I know Alan mentioned to us that that's the leading cause of road edge degradation is having people pull on and off onto the unpaved right-ofway. So we want to make sure that we have the proper language and that you all are comfortable with that as well. Okay. Was there anything else you needed from us on this issue?
Not on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, let's move on to number two, the P&amp;Z, Highlands County P&amp;Z Request Developer Comments. I see Mr. Gildy's here, so he's probably interested in what we're going to say.
Okay, so again, Dana Riddell, Town Planner for the Record. I went ahead and laid it out in the statement of issue, but there is a development. It is existing lots. There's about four existing lots on the west side of Lake Mir and on the east side of Lake Drive East. These four lots require plating in order to become official. And in order for a plat to occur, because these parcels are located in the LPRP, they have to change their zoning to plan development. So that's what.
And let me just interject for the public, if they're watching, explain what the LPRP is.
Yes, absolutely. So the LPRP is the Lake Placid Regional Overlay Plan District, and it basically establishes an area where And, it basically establishes an area where we plan to annex one day. We basically said, look, we have our town limits now, but we know in the future that we would also like to annex these parcels, and we want to make sure that they're developed consistent with the goals and vision of the town of Lake Placid. So, because of that, Highlands County and the town of Lake Placid engaged in an intergovernmental coordination efforts to amend the county's code and amend the town of Lake Placid's code, so that anytime there's a development in this area, the town is notified and we have the opportunity to comment. So, that's what we're here for tonight. We, the county, not us, but the county, received an application. This first page here is their request for our comment. This is their agenda, and you'll see where it's on the agenda at the end. They have their application, and I want to see if I could just get to a map, so y'all know what we're looking at here. Keep going, keep going. There's lots of different property owners, that's why there's so many affidavits, but thi- this is where the properties are located, and I'm here to receive any comments you may have.
Miss Hayes, you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Or any questions?
No questions, no comments.
Mr. Wilson?
So we're going, this will be under a PD?
Correct. A PD with an underlying R1 zoning. The R1 zoning is county zoning, so it requires a minimum of 750 square feet, but they were also proposing some conditions, which I think I've added to this packet. So, yeah, they're here. Here we go, the underlying zoning of R1, each lot shall be permitted one principal dwelling and one unattached guest house. In Highlands County code, guest homes are allowed with a special exception, so by allowing it as part of the zoning, they wouldn't have, and they actually couldn't go back for a special exception once you have a PD zoning, so they built that into it. Dome-style houses shall be permit, prohibited. Each lot shall be permitted no more than four detached accessory structures as follows: guest house, garage, wooden gazebo, additional accessory structures such as a shed. A comment that I will probably send over to the county if town council is okay with it, is that maybe about five years ago, we amended the town's code to allow lakefront properties to have their accessory structure in front of their home, instead of on the lakeside. And that was a reflection of the county's code, but when we did it here in the town, we said, hey, we don't want maybe like, a little rinky-dink shed out there by the road. We want it to be similar in architectural style to the house, and we want it to be a decent size, so that it looks like a nice, solid structure. So that's why you'll see, over on Lake June, that all the newer houses that were built, they have their garages in front, and we imposed those standards. First of all, we didn't have them, so we allowed it, and then we said, okay, we're gonna do it with some smart growth standards. So I probably would like to make that comment and just say, hey, if they're gonna put an accessory structure on the roadside, let's make it 500 square feet minimum, and let's go ahead and also make it architecturally similar to the house. The next condition that is proposed is the minimum setback from the property lines adjacent to the lake would be 75 feet, except for an open pavilion or gazebo made of wood. The lot size shall be a minimum of 39,750 square feet, and the minimum road frontage shall be 90 feet. And then everything else would fall back to whatever the R1 district says.
If I might, Dana, let me, let me have Mr. Gildy come up. Randy, if you don't mind, if, for the record, if you give your name and address, please?
Randy Gildy, 433 Lake Mir Drive.
If we were to tell Ms. Riddell that those conditions seemed okay by us, does any of that give you any heartburn?
If what now? Say it again?
Would any of those conditions that she's talking about us suggesting give you any heartburn?
Uh, no, most of them were put there by me.
Okay.
I, I will say, since I have the mic, that the, it's, the verbiage today is different, you know, with all the complexity of development and everything, 'cause it's planned use, planned unit development. I argued that, but I couldn't, because it's the verbiage today, it's not a development. It's four lots that have been paying taxes and had needs and bounds surveys for the last 40 years that we've been paying taxes, and there's a house on one of those already. But in order to get the R1, you know, to build a house on any one of those lots, even if that one that's been there for a long time blows down, he can't get a permit to rebuild it, because somehow, this was missed many years ago. So, I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Do you have any comments this time, Mr. Harris?
Do you oppose hooking up to sewer?
Say it again?
You oppose hooking up to sewer, you're gonna have a line right in front of those.
Yeah, and it's in the paperwork from the county that we signed, there's a provision somewhere in there that said, if it's available, you will hook up. So we all signed off on that.
Did they put a timeframe on that?
There is no timeframe in the resolution. He agreed to connect as part of the application process. It's not part of the resolution, but it is part of the county code.
And an annexation agreement?
Annexation agreement also isn't part of a resolu, part of the resolution, no.
It is, or is not?
Is not, but it is a requirement by our code and the county's code, so they should follow.
Are they doing that? Are you opposed to consent to annex when we're out there? The town doesn't touch the property yet, but it could.
Yeah, the only thing I would, one of the lots is gonna be built on real soon, and the process, everything, as we mentioned earlier, moves slow. I wouldn't want to hold up that construction and say, no well, no, no septic, because the lines aren't there yet.
Nobody's holding up anything. It would be, what we're, what our town and county code requires is that when we rezone in the LPRP, the applicant signs and records a consent to annex. That binds the future owners, whoever you sell to, so that when the town is contiguous to them, they have to annex.
And that, I don't know if it's in there or not.
Do you, would you consent to that, is my question?
I would, but I, because I represent the other owners, I have to talk to them, because I just annexed a bunch of property in North Carolina, 'cause I wanted to.
Well, it's a requirement of both the county and the town code, so I kind of have no choice but to recommend the council request that. I was hoping you would say yes, and that would make us all look nice and happy.
Yeah, it's a tough one with the other, it's, it's not in there, Dana? It's that you know of?
So, it's not, no, in the conditions of the resolution, they didn't add it as a requirement of the resolution. That doesn't mean it's not a requirement, it is a requirement, and the county should be making it, they should be requiring proof of the annexation consent before they process the application. If that's happening, I don't know.
They're not doing that in Bears Den either, are they?
My understanding is, we asked for it, and when the application came back with amendments to the conditions, it still was not included.
I, I've got, doesn't involve you, but I've got a problem with the county just ignoring their own code and our agreements. And I think the council should raise that issue to the county. On this, unfortunately, you happen to be the one that's up first.
And, and Randy, I think we also just want to make sure that you are aware that we're gonna break ground on the wastewater line later this week. Is that accurate?
Yes, so the wastewater line will be done at the latest December, so most likely before your house is complete, there will be a forced main out in front of your lots there. The groundbreaking is on Friday the 16th, and we're just waiting on some valve issues before they'll actually start construction, but they'll be starting construction. Their contract date says August, that they'll be complete in August. We're gonna have some delays because of material delays, but other than that, it will be under construction and complete by December at the latest.
And I guess I wanted to just make sure, before someone makes plans and designs $20,000 septic tanks and all that, just know that it is coming, so that you don't waste money.
Yeah, and, and I need to, let's go ahead and say, I'm the man's neighbor, so this makes me incredibly uncomfortable, but I think the town has to go on record also in saying, not only do you have to hook up, and this is any development, you just have to, happen to be the one where the county's pushing back. With any development, there should be a timeframe. If it's new construction, it's at new construction. If, if not new construction, it should be, I think, at, at most one year. So that's my recommendation to council.
For water and wastewater, Burt?
I would say for wastewater, I don't care if they hook up to water, personally. Wastewater, that's an environmental issue for all of us. It's a reason we're spending millions of dollars in this community.
Thank you.
So, this is an, and Randy just saying, this is an ongoing conversation that Mr. Harris is having with the county attorney, the county planning department, Dana's having it, so. No, Miss Hayes, are you okay with it, where we're going, Mr. Wilson? Okay. Okay.
And, and just clarify, new, new construction, 'cause the house has been there for 30 years, he doesn't have to hook up.
Within a year.
A year.
Pardon?
Within a year, that's the state statute.
Say it one more time? Yes or no, on the, on the old house?
The old house that's been there will have to hook up within a year of availability.
Okay, he's gonna have a problem with that. But, but it is what it is, I mean.
It's state law.
Yeah, that's state law.
Okay. Okay.
I think what I wanted to make sure was that, that, that you could go back and tell potential lot owners, hey, wastewater and water, hopefully, very soon, are coming, so as you are making potential plans to build a new home, you know, keep in mind that that's what you're going to have to do, so you don't waste tens of thousands of dollars in wells and septic tanks and stuff like that, you know, so.
No, I, I agree. I understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gildy. So Dana, do you think you have consensus from all of us, how you and Mr. Harris are gonna handle it with county staff?
Yes, can I read back my notes a little bit? That we do want to make a comment that an annexation agreement should be, or is required by both of our codes. And, ultimately, we would like to put a timeline on the connection for wastewater availability.
Per state law.
Per state law. And, did council have any objection to my comment of requiring the accessory structures to be architecturally similar?
Y'all good with that? Miss Hayes, Mr. Wilson?
Good with that.
Okay?
Okay. All right, that does give me consensus, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Harris?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Dana, is there anything else from you this evening?
That's it, have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving on, town attorney, is there anything you have that's not on the agenda, Mr. Harris?
Is, no.
Okay, we'll go to the town administrator. Mr. McCarthy, why don't you tell us about what's going on with the pipe bursting project?
Okay, so you remember part of the, the original pipe bursting bid, which, back in the summer, came in at 1.6 million dollars. We had the CDBG grant for 750,000, so we had to go back to the contract, and we revised the scope and reduced the scope. So basically, we eliminated the piece of the pipe bursting project to just Interlake from, from US 27 to Main Street. We did not cross the highway, cross US 27, and we did not go down to Main, and we did not go down to Devane Park. That reduced scope, we identified, and brings us down to just under a million dollars. We, as part of our budget, we got approval from the council to use our capital reserves to come up with the difference between the 750 and the 989. We have a proposal from Killabrew accepting that reduced scope, and they are prepared to start. The project would run from June to September. I just need council approval on the, to accept the reduced scope and authorize the final, signing off the final documents, and if so, then we'll be starting in June on this project.
Does anyone, Mr. Wilson, Miss Hayes, any, have any questions?
Kevin, I have a quick question. In, in terms of customers, do you have, the number of customers in that effect, basically, as a percentage of customers, how, that were on the proposed grant, how, how much is gonna get covered? Is it 50, 60%?
Are you on the pipe bursting, so?
On the pipe bursting, yes.
So the, so, depending on how you want to phrase it, that, that is the main line that comes out of the Magnolia Treatment Plant. So, if we were not doing isolation and rerouting, and we're adding some valves and stuff, we would be cutting off a large percentage of customers. But, as it is, we have, we'll have those lines running and feed in the businesses in the back, on both sides of Interlake. We don't anticipate turning anybody off during the construction project, if that's the, if I'm answering the question correctly. We do still have to add some, we have to add a couple of valves to, so we don't have anybody cut off, 'cause right now, we still have a couple of blocks that would be cut off at times, mostly at night. But we're eliminating that impact, we don't anticipate that we will have anybody out of water during the project. They did, they are breaking it up into sections, into block by block, which is part of the reason for the extended timeframe. They do have to dig up every intersection, 'cause that's where our valves are, that feed off in both directions. And so we will be making where those valve intersections are, they do have to have excavation and, and do that for the pipe bursting. So, there will be sections of that that are under construction, but a block at a time, so we have to, so we reduce the impact on the overall project into small pieces.
But if I understood Mr. Wilson's question, it's a little bit different, I think, there'll be a, there'll be a significant amount of Lake Placid water customers that'll benefit from this project, because this is the main supply line that comes out towards 27, covers all that commercial area, other neighborhoods and all that, correct?
Yes, pretty much everything in the town of Lake Placid.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, Miss Hayes? Mr. Wilson? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow the, Kevin to negotiate with Killabrew for the amended contract for the pipe bursting project.
Okay, I think we have a motion to approve the reduced scope bid from Killabrew and authorize the town administrator to sign all final documents and change orders needed to complete the project. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Okay, Kevin, we'll move on to you with drag boat racing.
Okay, so we had a conference call with the Highlands County TDC and the Southern Outlaw Drag Boat Association that would like to bring drag boat racing to Lake June. And so this is to, this is very preliminary discussions, but I wanted to get a feeling if any, if anybody had an issue, so we could go into negotiation and then start bringing back proposals and authorizations. So what they are looking at doing is, it's 50 to 60 boats. They would set up an 800-foot course over, directly out from the Lake June Ballfields Park, Lake June Park. They need that boat ramp, so they would be requesting to close that boat ramp for the weekend, Friday through Sunday. Their races run from 11:00 to 6:00 on Saturday and 12:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. There's nine different classes of boats, based on the size of the engine and the speed they run, so, basically, they are looking for the boat ramp, they're gonna have to find a forklift to load and unload boats and drop them in, but that's an ambulance, a rescue diver, safety boat, police and fire. They will be applying for a TDC grant to cover that, they're not asking for anything at this point, any financial consideration from the town, but they are asking for the close, the use of the park and closing of the boat ramp for that weekend. I don't think I said it, but it's September 7th and 8th.
So you don't need any official action, you just want to make sure no one's gonna raise their hand and say, why are we letting you move forward with, making these arrangements?
Well, from what I understand, being on the TDC, they're needing to know, they have another venue that they've been doing, using, this is something that they need to know sooner than later, whether or not we're gonna entertain it. And, do you recall the numbers of people, participants and, and viewers that they had?
So typically, typically, and it depends on how, if the town wants to promote it and how it's promoted, their typical races have about 2,000 people between vendors and, and people that watch the races. people between vendors and, and people that watch the races and the races. So they do set up the boats, they encourage the public to come in, they'll look at the boats, visit with the drivers, see their kind of pit area. They have had upwards of twenty thousand or ten or fifteen thousand at some venues, where they make it a large event, they bring in food trucks, face painting, kinda make it a more of a country, I say country fair, not country fair, but a, a bigger venue, event. So that's kind of, so you can figure that there'll be, you know, a thousand to two thousand people at any rate, just people, the race fans that come in, they're trying to bring it into South Florida, everything else is further north. And so I, yeah, I just needed to find out if, if there's an objection from the council tonight on closing that park. I don't need an actual decision, but we need to say, if I knew that y'all are opposed to it, then I'm gonna say, yeah, this isn't gonna happen and, and we need to move on. I, I have the authority based on rentals and stuff to kind of authorize the park, but I'm not gonna do that on this kind of event without council approval and then bringing back contracts or whatever is involved in it.
I'm open to it, the time of year is, you know, the kids are back in school, the summer time is winding down and everything. The only concern I would have would be for residents and noise levels, that's that would be the only major issues that I would have, because I, I don't know how loud they are, I'm sure they're loud, but.
Yeah, Ms., let me answer this quick, Ms. Hart told me that, you know, that is, it's like, like a chainsaw briefly, you know? And, you know, they run a series of races, they, excuse me, they buoy off an area and often other boaters come outside of the buoyed off area to, to watch and people, in this case, would watch from Bishop Park, that kind of thing, so. Do you have a question, Ms. Hayes?
No, I was just gonna make note that it is the weekend after Labor Day, I was concerned about that. And I'm concerned about the noise and the comments of the residents in that area. Does the drag race go out toward the middle of the lake, or does it go down the shoreline? I mean, what's the configuration of the race itself, of the track or whatever it would cover?
It's gonna be closer to the shoreline, they're, they wanna be away from waves and wave action when they're doing these drag races. It's in a, I'm gonna say eight hundred foot course, so it takes a not the whole length, obviously, it takes a fairly short area, they're short races, they're drag races, so some of those boats are gonna be very quiet, because the lower the classes, those are normal type engines that are water cooled, and you don't hear those anymore than you hear a normal boat. And others, as you get up into the bigger classes, are gonna be a little noisy and, but again, it's a very short period of time. But it, it will be in close to shore, not in the middle of the, what I call the Cove area, but it'd be closer up to shore.
I, I know it's important for us, for, as a county and as a town, as far as the tourist development and the amount of money that this would bring in to us, but I'm also concerned about the residents there. How many residents would we impact? And I realize it's a chainsaw, but how many chainsaws? You know, it's not one, so, and how, how long, when does it start in the morning, does it start at eight, does it start at ten?
Eleven, eleven to six, eleven to six on Saturday and twelve to six on Sunday.
Okay. Well, at least everyone should be up by then. But I, I would just have a, I would want to know that the residents were aware and if they had any negative comments, I think we oughta hear that.
From my perspective, I'm open to continuing the conversation with them and I'm not unopposed to it.
I'm, I'm not, I don't live there, I'm not opposed to it, but I wonder if the people that do live there might be, so. I'm not, I'm not opposed to continuing the conversation, though.
Okay.
Saturday, yes, so I've got some direction and we'll discuss it on Saturday at the Lake June Point Homers Association, because that's, that little strip on the Cove side, it gets addressed, and then the two or three houses in the I used to call it the fish camp, but I don't even know what it's actually called, the condos that are in there by Lake June Hills. So I think that's kind of where it runs and, but we'll, we'll talk to the residents and see what we kind of impact and what we get from them.
And Lake June Point to be the, what, three or four houses that would potentially, you know, it'd be at the end of some.
It's the very end, it's the end of the cul-de-sac.
Three, four, five.
It's only those, yes, so you gotta, we, we have this park strip in there, that's our park, and then we have the little grove strip in there, so it's, that's that section in there that, that's gonna be affected, so majority of it is, is not.
Right in front of the park, actually.
Well, they wanna do it in front of the park, because that's the observation areas where you can have people come in, and we may, if we have stands that are movable, we could put some stands in, but that way, you set up for some of the viewing, so.
Cool.
And let me just say, you know, we've, we've asked the TDC and Ms. Hart to try to bring things to Lake Placid to benefit our business community, and this is one of the things that fits with our deals. Okay, y'all are good with letting Kevin move forward?
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this? Okay, not seeing anyone. Let's move on to, I think, uh, let's go ahead and move on to an update on the Lake Placid Police Department.
Just real quick, on the Lake Placid Police Department, we're getting site plans, appropriate site plans for Dana, so Dana can move forward on development, the PD, what they call phase two of this, because phase one was the development of this property, phase two was any outstructures. We need to abide by our own rules and regulations, so we need to address the, and do a PD on that development. So that'll be coming forward in the next, probably not at the next meeting, but the meeting after, in that process, so we can get through that process. The plans are still being developed and underway, and as far as I know, we're still in the, we're still in the budget process for the, for the state. We will not know until basically July first, because the governor has veto authority on all appropriations, on appropriation requests. So our plan is still to go out to bid shortly after we get notification that, that we can do that on, on on that project, so it's still moving forward and, and we're in progress.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Hayes, I know this is a thing that you're tracking closely.
I am, and I'm good so far, thank you, see you next month.
Mr. Wilson, any questions on your part? Okay. Okay. Okay, our final, I think our final item of the night is town council member appointment. As the public is aware, Mr. Sapp resigned from his count, from the council seat that he held as of December thirtieth or thirty first, one of those dates. We had kind of put the word out there that, that, and per our code, this council has the responsibility to fill that seat. So we've, so far, we've only had one person, Ms., Ms. Worley, who's served on council previously, has requested appointment for that seat. And so we are here tonight to decide whether or not we want to take any action. Do we have any questions before we move forward? Ms. Hayes, any comments? So our, our option is, we can, I think we've had, let me just say this, we've had conversation in the past that, due to the change in state law that requires council members to file Form Six, I think we had agreement that any appointee, we'd also require to fill Form Six out in the short term and not wait until the July first deadline. I know that in order to qualify for the election, one would have to have the Form Six filled out by noon on Friday, is that accurate, Eva?
Yes.
Okay. I know that I intend to rerun for the seat I currently occupy, and I filled out my Form Six. Doesn't affect Ms. Hayes yet, she has until July the first. I believe Mr. Wilson has taken steps to fill out Form Six.
I have done it, completed it, and I am qualified.
Okay.
Today.
So, that's where we're at, and Ms. Worley, why don't you come up to the podium and tell us why you would like to be considered to return to the Lake Placid Town Council? And obviously, for the record, name and address.
Deborah Worley, 380 Easterner Lake Boulevard, Lake Placid, Florida.
Microphone down, so we can hear you, please.
I'm sorry, 380 Easterner Lake Boulevard, Lake Placid, Florida, 33852, Deborah Worley. As I said in my letter, I think I'm really qualified to do this, and I would like to leave on being on the council.
Ms. Worley, have you done the Form Six yet, have you completed it?
I have not, because I haven't been, I haven't actually applied for the election, and I haven't been appointed, but yes, I will do that. I understand, and that's why, I understand that it's onerous, it's, it's a, I mean, but I think the four, the other form was kind of invasive as well. I mean, it's not, to me, I understand too, that I'm still investigating that, but yeah, I will do it, because my life is simple. I'm not complicated. I can't see any reason I wouldn't be able to fill out that form. I understand that you all, weren't you provided $500 for some help? No?
Yeah, I, I don't intend on doing that, I'm just gonna.
Okay, well, I don't think it's that much different to me, and, you know, I've investigated as much as I can. I don't think I'm gonna have a problem with it at all.
Okay.
Because I didn't have a problem with the last one, I had to divulge everything, everybody I had owed, every property I owned. I mean, the four, the other form was the only difference I see, or checking accounts and things like that. Yeah, I might seek some advice, but I don't have a problem with it.
May I relate our conversation?
Yes.
I spoke today with our clerk, who had talked with Deborah about that filing and the council's decision to say, if you want us to be appointed, we want to see you file, like any other candidate would. And I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, now is the time, that the clerk spoke with the Ethics Commission and they said, no, wait until July, and that's what Mrs. Worley was, Ms. Worley was told that she would be filing in July, not now, which is the reason she didn't file now. And she's more recently been told, Eva has, you can require, we of council can require it now. So the ethic, Eva didn't make a mistake, Ms. Worley didn't make a mistake, somebody got.
It's a, it's a new law, and they're trying to interpret.
And they're doing the best they can, too.
Yeah.
So if Deborah will commit to file,
Sure.
then you're good to go, you have the latitude to appoint if you want to, that's your discretion.
I think I'm well qualified, it's a two-year term, I'm up and running, I don't have a learning curve. I just think I'm very well qualified to do this.
Ms. Hayes, do you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions, I just see that, that Royce, Charlie Wilson, Deborah Worley have picked up packets to run for election. Because of that, wouldn't Ms. Worley have to fill out Form Six to run for election, and maybe she doesn't want to do that, because maybe we will appoint her tonight, and she wouldn't have to run for election? Am I thinking that through correctly? I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, let, let me, if, the answer is that, yes, if, if we do not appoint her and she chooses to run, in order to qualify, she would have to have a form verified that she's filled out Form Six by noon on Friday.
Right.
I think what Mr. Harris said is, we can either, let's just, for the sake of this conversation, we can appoint Ms. Worley and not have any restrictions, and then she will be legally bound to fill out Form Six by July first, or we could appoint Ms. Worley under the condition that she fills out Form Six within some given period of time, the Ethics Office has said the town council has the right to require someone to do it sooner as a condition of qualification for appointment, is that accurate, Eva?
Yes, that's what I was told today.
So the answer is, if she's appointed, she's going to fill it out some, at some stage, on or before July first. We'd had conversations a month ago about if someone was seeking appointment, that we may require them to do it earlier, just like is required by folks that were seeking elective office.
Right, right, that's what I'm referring to, we had that conversation.
As I recall, we were going to.
Right.
With authorization from the Ethics Commission, which sounds like we've gotten clarity for, so.
So I, I think, and Mr. Harris will correct me, we could appoint Ms. Worley to begin service on some date, subject to her verification of filling out Form Six, is that accurate, Mr. Harris?
You can do that.
Or we can appoint Ms. Worley tonight, she takes office tonight, and she says, yes, I have pledged that I'm going to fill out Form Six by some date. Or we can appoint Ms. Worley tonight or some other time, and let her just fill out Form Six when she's statutorily required to. I mean, are those the three options, Mr. Harris?
Those are the three options.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to say, Ms. Worley, before I seek a motion?
I don't think a bunch of line people in line are waiting to go do this job and fill out that form. I'm just, I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, you should take the the bottom of the barrel, I think I'm qualified. So I'm just saying, it's, it's an onerous thing to fill out this form, and I don't know, I'm not having really a problem with it, because I'm pretty open in my life, I don't have any secrets, I think I've been here so long and pretty much, I'm an open book, I live in town, I'm right on the main street, people even know when my car's not there, and they ask me, are you okay? I mean, I, I'm pretty an open book, so I really don't have so much trouble doing that. But this is a, this is a hard thing to do, and I'm not saying take me, because there's nobody else, but I just don't even know. I mean, if you don't want anybody up there, that's fine, I understand that, and I was told, you don't have to appoint anybody. You can just go right on without anybody there until the next election.
I think the council's looking for you to say, yes, I will fill it out within, say, two weeks or thirty days, or something like that.
I think I said that, I'm willing to fill it out.
Yeah, I think, just, please don't misunderstand, Deborah, what we've had the conversation is, because the state has deemed in the legislature's wisdom, that, that transparency is important, that we were going to ask any candidate or any, any candidate for appointment, to have to fulfill the same requirements that any candidate seeking election had to, so.
And I'm not saying I would even run for election, I'm doing this step by step, you know, I'm, I just wondered, you know, I was hoping you all would appoint me, if not, then I have to reconsider and see if I would run for election. I mean.
I think I'm ready to take a stab at it.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Deborah Worley to the vacant Councilman Sapp seat, with the condition that she files the same by Friday, the sixteenth, the closing of the qualifying period, her Form Six with the state.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I would second that motion.
We have a second, is there any further discussion amongst the council? Is there anything from the public?
I think there's something.
Ms. Worley, do you understand the nature of the motion, what Mr. Wilson's motion is, is that we are going to appoint you, and it'll become effective, but the, you know, it would become effective at
Now.
Now, contingent upon you filling out Form Six by 12:00 PM on Friday, February sixteenth.
That's what the motion says, and I answered your que, the direct question you answered is, are those the three options? No one asked my opinion as to which one may be better or worse. If you're going to, it, it concerns me that it's a contingent appointment, which could lead to some, some less than clear outcomes, if the form is filled out incompletely, if, you know, is she on, is she off? I would prefer to see, if you want to stick with your format of motion, fine, give her more than four days. That form is a beast, I appreciate her representation, she lives a simple. That form is a beast. I appreciate her representation. She lives a simple life, but that form is a beast and she may need more than, I'd give her at least two weeks. In the alternative, look her dead in the eye and say, I accept your representation that you will fill out that form within the next couple of weeks and I appoint you without condition. My concern is to see a clear, you are appointed, you are not appointed.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
To you about your motion? Could the appointment be, I understand your concern about the clarity, but could it be that the appointment was effective some date in the future if action was performed, or does that still give you pause?
It still gives me, yes, you can do that.
Well, let, let me ask you a question. Would it be too difficult to have a special meeting? And if those conditions are met, then we can, at that point, appoint? If the condition of the Form 6 or at our next meeting?
You can, you have the discretion to do that as well. Then we have the question of, are we canceling election? Which is a kind of a weird thing because Eva is on a certain timeframe to get things done for an election. So I would tend to get on with it tonight. If Deborah looks at you and says she's going to file, she's going to file. I can't imagine her making that representation and then taking the seat up here. If she does reneg on that commitment, by law, she's got to file by July anyway, so everything will be transparent by that time at the latest.
I'm fine with her work. She's gonna have to file at some point anyway, so, but the intent, if you can, get it done the same as what a qualifying candidate would have to do. It shows your interest in pursuing this position. You're gonna have to do it now or 1st of July, so if you get it done now, it's one thing you won't have to contend with in the future.
Are you still comfortable with your second, Ms. Hayes?
I, I'm not sure whether the contingent has been taken out of the motion, but my, my question is that if Ms. Worley has picked up a packet and intended to run for election, she would have at least had a preliminary look or start on Form 6 in order to meet the deadline of February 16th, so why couldn't we continue to have that deadline? Because apparently she would have had to do that anyway in order to-
And that's what I'm suggesting.
In order to file it. So I'm kind of stuck on February 16th.
That is true.
If she hadn't picked up a packet, well, then, okay. But there's, there's an intent here because she's picked up a packet for election. So I'm looking at February 16th to, for my second.
So we have a motion and a second?
Is Mr. Wilson's motion have any legal problem?
What is the motion?
May I ask a question? So what I heard, which I didn't know before, you don't even, I don't even have to fill out that form, but you're requiring me to.
Pardon me?
I mean, right now, to be appointed, I don't have to fill out the form, but you're requiring me to.
By state law, you do not, but council is saying you-
No, I understand, but the council is making this decision that
They made it last month.
Above the requirement, I need to fill out this form, which I'm fine doing.
We, we made this decision at our last meeting that that was-
Okay, and I'm fine with that.
Before we even announced-
I understand.
That. And we're just trying to be uniform in what we're doing and transparent in everything that we're doing.
I'm just frustrated. You understand I'm saying-
Your motion, as stated, will stand and is legal.
Okay, I'll stand by mine.
Could, could you restate the motion, please?
The motion is that we appoint Deborah Worley contingent upon her completion of the Form 6 by noon on February 16th, which would be the qualifying period for the election. And if that, well-
I would second that. I will second that.
And that means she would be sworn in at the next council meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any, any further discussion from the public?
Let me ask one more question. If I turned it in in two days, does that make any difference? No?
What'd you say?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, if I turn it in in two days, does that make any difference, or?
It's gotta be filed with the Commission on Ethics. It's an online procedure.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, it's, you gotta, you filed with them and then you can make a copy of it. That has to be turned in to the clerk.
Yeah, when you file it, there'll be like a page that you, it prompts you that says that they verify that they've received it and you bring that to Eva. That's at least what I did.
Perfect.
Did you have any other questions, Ms. Worley? Any other questions from the council? Any from the public? Hearing none? Eva, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Worley.
Thank you.
Contingent upon-
Contingent upon you filling your Form 6, you know, you'll be sworn into the next council meeting.
February 16th.
It's fun.
March 11th.
It can't be done in a day.
Yep.
A whole day.
All right, thank you.
Wouldn't, I mean, just as, as your friend, I would not procrastinate until Friday morning because it, it does take some work.
I know, it's onerous. Yeah, I do know that.
And thank you for making yourself available for service to the town again.
All right, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, is there any other business before us tonight?
A couple of quick things. Groundbreaking Friday at 10:00 AM at the Lake Placid Camping Conference Center for the Forest Main. I did get an email about two hours ago that the funding for the water main has been approved by DEP. So soon as we get that paperwork contract signed for the SRF, that will, we will be going out to bid on the, on the water main. So that will be, that will be moving forward, the actual construction, just so I put it out there. The over, road overlaying on Placid U Drive, Placid U Drive has nothing to do with the Camping Conference Center Forest Main. I have sent the county the exact list of every road that we're gonna be impacting in this construction project in the next two to three years. And that would be contingent upon additional funding. So to make sure that we don't have any other roads being overlaid that we're gonna have to be very careful about because I don't want to have to patch a new, newly overlaid road. Or the contractor doesn't want to have to patch a newly overlaid road. So we are back and forth with EPA on a waiver for the Buy American project, product for the valves. We had three contractors said that they couldn't deliver in less than 26 weeks. EPA came back and said there are two contractors that can deliver within 16. One of those does not make a prod, product that will fit our project. And we're waiting for an answer on the other manufacturer. So we may have a delay in actual construction based on the valves and EPA required, requirements on the Buy American. So they're working on cell fence, they've got other materials, they're ready to go. We're waiting on this issue with EPA, so. I also had an email, I haven't responded to yet, I've read it's fairly extensive. One, one of the contractors, we had our pre-bid meeting for the wastewater treatment plant last week. One of the contractors has requested additional time, which the current bid date is March 7th. They want to push it a month. My initial thought on that, and I haven't answered, is to allow them that time because we will probably get a better price if we're giving them time to make sure all the prices are in. I believe, and I'll work through the dates, that it's not gonna put us in an issue on the construction, so Paul and Kent is the contractor, they're a large contractor, they know what they're doing, and so it's not just some local general contractor decided to jump into the deal. So, anyway, so we may have a delay. I was planning on bringing you the bids at the April meeting. It will probably be at the May meeting now. And once I answer those questions and, and emails. But those projects, so the pipe bursting, starting in June, the Lake Placid Camping Conference Center will be starting in the next two to three months, maybe sooner if we come back, depending on what the answer is, maybe starting in two to three weeks, actual construction. It just, we're trying to get those thing. And then the water main will probably, four to five months out, be starting this summer too. So there'll be a lot, a lot of things happening starting in the summer, a lot of construction happening at the very least and going on in the summer. So those are the highlights on that. The, a couple of the other Marquada Lift Station, Main Street Lift Station were a month out or better. I'm going out to bid, the Democa Lift Station, but those permits have always been sent, all been sent to DEP. So we're waiting on their review and approval and and then we got more delays for the bigger projects that are approved, Placid Lakes and Lake Placid, so those, those are still a couple of months out. So we're working on those timings, but all those projects are still underway and, and moving forward, so. I did want to introduce, I failed to do that earlier, our new engineer is Dennis Murray. Dennis, will you stand up, wave, say hello? I can't tell you how excited I am. So he's been getting the fire hose version of the floodgates of, here are all the projects and here's how you get to them and still start doing some research on your own. And I, well, we have not had the time yet, back and forth. I was out sick Friday and part of today and, and so we haven't spent as much time together as I would have liked, but, but he has jumped in and started reviewing the plans for the South Plant Force Main and Lift Station and has comments on those already. And he's worked with Dana on getting some of her plan reviews moving, so we're very excited about that and we're bringing, so projects are moving, things are happening and, and I think we're moving in a good direction.
And I might add, I think, Mr. McCarthy, that you are, you are meeting with various groups, homeowners associations to, so that our stakeholders out there are very much aware of what decisions have been made and what's still kind of ongoing in the decision-making process, correct?
Yes, I met with the Placid Lake Homeowners Association in December. And I am meeting with the Lake June Homeowners Association meeting on Saturday, the 17th, so we're gonna continue. Putting that out there, homeowners association meetings, as we get information, nothing else has changed. We have no information on the other grants that we've applied for yet, so there's no new news. But just to keep people informed of kind of where we're at, we're trying to get that done. And we have participated, just so everybody knows, there is a, if you don't know, there's a toxic algae bloom on Lake Placid. There is a very large algae bloom, hasn't been confirmed toxic, on Lake June. Pretty much the entire cove, if you get out there. I was kayaking on it last week and most of the cove of Lake June is a fairly large algae bloom, so the algae blooms are continuing, they're continuing in the winter weather, which is a little odd and confusing, at least from the, I wouldn't say confusing, concerning to the County Natural Resources Division and DEP, so. But yes, we're continuing, trying to get the word out and oh, and I forgot, Lake Clay also has an algae bloom, so.
Put the speedboat racers on notice of our problem there.
They're not gonna be swimming in it, so I don't think it's in-
They're not supposed to.
They're not supposed to. This is true, so.
Just a thought.
Are you talking about the drag racer? No.
And I know, I think Mr. McCarthy said this, but I'm, I'm just gonna kind of restate it in, I guess, plainer English. He is working towards what is the proper timing because it does not do us any good to put in trunk lines and service lines way before we have plant capacity. And so it's going to be probably, in round numbers, two years before the new plant is up and running. Is that relatively accurate?
Yes, the contract's 540 days, so.
Yep. And, and so that decision has been, when people say, what decisions have been made? We have made a decision to build that plant. Bids are gonna come in. Then the other things will be timed so that they don't go in too far in front of when the plant is able to handle that capacity. Lift stations will be adjusted in order to handle the capacity coming from various, so we are in fact moving, moving forward, so. Mr. Harris?
Forgive me for not bringing this up under Town Attorney, I forgot. A month, two months ago, as previously discussed, I contacted our congressman and started the process to apply for a federal grant for our water to, septic to sewer conversion. Had a very good discussion with Scott Franklin's office. It's a tight project that he, that the congressman likes to support. They gave me a preliminary application. I completed it, filed it. Today, I got the notice that the application is due March 1. So I would like your vote to authorize the mayor to file the federal request for federal funds for the water and sewer project. They requested, they, they like to fund, the Appropriations Committee likes to fund in annual increments. So their first request was give us a grand total and then break it down into annual bites. They like to see the progress go along. That is going to require some witchcraft and chicken bones. Hopefully Kevin will have a lot of those in his back pocket on which communities and which order. I think you've kind of figured that out. And maybe even do we want to discuss a South Plant for the Sun and Lake and Southern Region? So I, I'd like to ask you to let the mayor check off on that. Kevin and I'll be working on it in the coming two weeks. So that's obviously due before you're back again.
Okay, Cheryl entertained a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the federal grant application.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion in the council? Anything from the public? Seeing none? Eva, if you'll pull the board?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes, anything else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir, that's quite enough.
Okay. Okay, for the good of the order, Ms. Hayes, anything?
Do we have an update on Smoke Shack? We looked at some plans a while ago. I see a big piece of equipment there. Is, are things going forward on Smoke Shack's rebuild?
Dana, you know anything? Alan?
The Smoke Shack hasn't, excuse me, formally submitted any plans to us recently in the last couple of months. They had to abandon their septic tank. There was a delay on that because of the Avon Park wastewater treatment facility not accepting those dumps anymore. So they did finally get the opportunity to abandon their septic. But after that, I haven't heard any updates, so they, the, what you had seen in the past, they were requesting a couple deviations from their site plan, some parking and some things like that, but they still do have to go through the full commercial review process, so once they submit that, that usually takes anywhere four, from four months on the very, very, very short side to maybe nine months.
To Ms. Hayes' question that they are, at this time, they are not waiting on any action from us, it's them needing to take some action, correct?
Correct.
Does that satisfy your question?
Well, I, I just wondered what was going on and, yes, that's fine.
I spoke, hearsay, I spoke to one of the family members. She said they still fully intend on moving forward and that's why they demoed the buildings and all that, so.
Has council seen the site plan for that?
Yeah, we did, several months ago.
Okay.
And didn't we give a landscape exemption? Didn't we, Dana, give a landscape exemption to them?
Parking variance, we were-
Parking and landscape.
Parking and sidewalk, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we, we saw it.
But just so the public knows, we are not holding anything up. We, it's the applicants and it's in the applicant's court, correct?
Correct. Not, there's no applications.
Anything else, Ms. Hayes?
To the effect that we have a flyer up here on Toby the Clown's golf tournament. The Lake Placid Rotary Club has a golf tournament as well, March 23rd, the week before Toby's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Wilson?
Just to kind of bring a lot of people that may be watching, our Firdap grant for $200,000 has been approved pending the appropriated amount of money that, which is more than it was last year for these grants. If it is not vetoed, we will probably be approved, but we were ranked near the bottom, so there's a chance, it may or may not happen, but we won't know until the session is over and the governor goes through the budget.
If I might add, just briefly, so they funded all of the projects last year, 11.3 million dollars. Total requests are 11.8 or 9, so it's not a stretch to say that they'll probably approve all of the projects, but that's preliminary discussion, that it's, we're not, we're not that far out from, from the funding, even though we were near the bottom. We're not that far out on the funding, so- We're not that far out on the funding, so it's a very good possibility that that will get funded.
Yeah, and I would like to move forward towards our application with, our presentation with ARPAK to get the ball rolling once, and I'm being optimistic that that does, in fact, happen, that we move forward quickly.
Thank you, anything else, Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't really have anything. Again, Ms. Worley, thank you for putting yourself forward for service. Look forward to you joining us up here next month, hopefully. I'm sorry, I probably, Alan, Dennis, Eva, Rachel, anyone else? Eva, anyone, staff, have anything else that I forgot to ask? Okay. I see the chief's gone. Oh, okay. Stuart, anything from the police department? Okay, well, good deal. Well, thank you again for, you know, I think it was, it's always very heartwarming to see when a public servant is able to make such a huge impact on a family. So, I'm glad you guys are properly trained, and we're able to leap in, you know, Officer Basero was able to leap into action, because it truly is a life-changing thing, not only for the young person, but for that entire family. So, thank you to, to our police officers. Mr. Harris, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. McCarthy? Well, we stand adjourned, thank you, folks.
That would be me. Yes.
Ah, they're just good, a little sore from, well, once I get moving, they're good. Lot better than they used to be.
None of my family's from Tennessee. That's interesting. Now, there's another bird here, that's in Jackson, as we speak. From Tennessee. That's, that is, that's interesting.
You see, you're going all right?
All right, dear.
You all done?
I am done.
Shut that down.
I am done, shut that puppy down. I am so done. I gotta get everything tuned back on now.
We've updated these things three times today, all day long. Shut down, update again.
Of course, nice.
Oh, thank you for being here tonight, thank you very much.
Hey, how are you?
Very good, about yourself?
Good, I'm Charlie Wilson.
David Mullins, nice to meet you, David. Want to say thank you on the opportunity?
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate you coming down.
Absolutely. Our visitor association's trying to make sure we got all the days covered, so.
Yeah, well, good, good, we appreciate it.
It's an honor, so thank you.
Thank you.